I think my list of those a few things going on.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so what happens? Two bodies playing softball in the house, no?
Yeah.
I see. What is that playing this year?
Oh, it's nothing.
Oh, that's nice. Which part of Michigan?
Oh, yeah.
Huh? I guess Michigan.
I think that's for sure.
I've been there. It's the big place.
Yeah, it is. It's a whole different vibe with all the, it's such a college town.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Braintree Planning Board meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty-five. We're here in Town Hall, of course, and the meeting is being televised through B-Cam and available on YouTube. We don't have any actual public hearings today, so we can go ahead and jump right into the items in our old new business. And just, I'm going to go a little bit out of order, and I will just note for the record that we do have a full board this evening. Number three on our agenda, the approval of meeting minutes for May, we're going to table that until the July meeting. And then, the first item that I'll call is actually number two on the agenda, which is the acceptance of ASBILT and release of surety for Planning Board File twenty-three ten, four sixty Pond Street, Michael and Matthew Fabiano. And I see that we have a staff report here dated June third, twenty twenty-five. Director Manchek, would you like to give us an update on that project?
Sure, so the Fabiano brothers, they submitted ASBILT plan, I ended up taking a look at it, visiting the site, and everything kind of checks out after I reviewed the files. And so I think at this point, it would be, I would, I would, I would suggest that we adopt or, and obviously accept the, a ASBILT plan, and we move forward and release the surety, so.
Okay. And Member McCauley, do you have any questions?
Has the project been built?
And if you could, if you could come up to the microphone and just give your name and address, to be able to respond.
I'm Michael Fabiano. Four sixty-eight Pond Street is where I live. Project is four sixty Pond Street, and it's completed, yep, hundred percent.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Member Kent?
No questions.
Member Conley?
No questions, thank you.
Member Kane?
No questions.
Member Kaya?
No questions.
All right, and I don't have any either, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so with that, we'll be looking for a motion. On this request.
Still moved?
A motion to grant the ASBILT approval with the surviving conditions and to release the ASBILT surety by Member Conley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. And then, the next and last item on our agenda is a request for minor modification of Planning Board File twenty oh-two A for eight-ten-and-forty Arnold Street. I see that we have a staff report on this one as well. Director Manchek, can you give us an update on where that project is?
Sure, so this project was last in front of this board, I believe, on November twelfth. The applicant team is here, represented by eight-ten-and-forty Arnold Street, Riverside Park, Industrial Park. I've been onto the site a couple times, reviewing the plans. The modification is to create a smaller building back in Phase Two of the property, and I think it's acceptable, it kind of works out, there's reduction in traffic. The one question I do want to make is that Deb Keller is here from Merrill Engineering. Deb has been working with the planning office prior to my arrival, and also with the application team reviewing the plan, so I'll let Deb speak to that. We, I have been out on site, we did have a site visit with the application team about two weeks ago. I did request a punch list of remaining work within Phase One, and that has not been received yet. And I just kind of wanted to have that to highlight what else is, you know, what is remaining within that phase. I have no issues with the approval of the modification, but I would like to know what's remaining within that work process, as, as we kind of embark on Phase Two of the project, moving forward. I'll ask Deb, at the appropriate time, to kind of speak to her review letter, which was circulated to the board. But in essence, the modification is really creating a smaller building back in their, that Phase Two, but also, it's, we need to, in my eyes, identify all the loose ends that need to be kind of tied up within Phase One. So, at this point, that's, that's the best overall picture of the project I can give.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Keller, I see that we do have your peer review here, can you give us an overview of some of the important points on there?
Sure, so I have completed an initial and a second peer review on the modification, and at this time, I think there's maybe three or four items remaining, I can go over them quickly. Some of them could be conditions of the modification, one would be providing, just for the record, so the board has it, a copy of the updated SWIP. They currently have an active SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan for Phase One. Now that they're moving into Phase Two, that plan should be updated and, and recorded and provided to the board for a record. I would assume that conservation would like to see that as well, just for the sensitivity of this project. I, I did ask for some minor modifications to their operation and maintenance plan, more for going forward when the project is done, and you have either owners, property owners or leases within the buildings, making sure that there's a spill prevention plan in place, as this is a commercial property, and it was noted in the documentation that there's potential for hazardous waste or chemicals onsite, and that they, everybody knows the protocols that those have to be enclosed within the building or in a specific location. If there's spills, there's a procedure for anyone there to follow. I, I did ask, since this is a larger project, that in the long-term operation and maintenance plan, we have a BMP plan, so that everyone knows where all of the stormwater facilities are, so that when they go to do the maintenance, they know where they're looking to find the structures, et cetera. That one's all set, let's see. And then there was, just I think, two minor plan adjustments, just for construction purposes. One of the, there was a crossover on a contour, so it's more for them to clarify that on the plan, so that when the contractor's out there, he can, can read the plan, as well as a little bit more clarification in the area where the transition between Phase One and Phase Two currently out there, they've, they've added some extra asphalt to protect Phase One from any up gradient stormwater coming into that developed area, and that would need to be adjusted, put back to the proposed grade, so that all of the drainage and roadway layout is appropriate and per the plan, so that transition area needs to be highlighted on, on the modification plan set. Other than, other than that, they have addressed all of my comments through the first and second peer review letter.
And just to confirm, I have your, your last peer review letter, May seventh, there hasn't been any written response to that, has it?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. Guess with that, I know, before we get into some of the member comments, since there are some outstanding questions from the peer reviewer, we hear from the applicant team?
Michael Modestino, representing the applicant, George Lang. I think I'm gonna have Sean Hardy come up here and address the issues that Deb Merrill has raised, and, and I, I've read it, I've read it carefully, and, and I agree with everything she's saying in the May seventh peer review, but I'll have Sean explain it, since he's more involved in the engineering part of this.
Good evening, Sean Hardy, professional engineer with Hardy and Man Design Group. We, so the revision, if you recall, this was a, this was intended to be an entire large warehouse unit, so the, this modification is to request to make thirty contractor bays and a smaller warehouse unit. That resulted in changes that needed to happen with some of the drainage, as far as to match the pre versus post of what was approved, so there was some tweaking or changes and things like that, so certainly we went through that with the peer review. As far as the conditions, like the updated SWIP, certainly, some of that's gonna be involved when the, when a different contractor gets brought on board, kind of with scheduling and points of contact and things like that, as well as the O and M and the BMP plan, once... Okay, because it was like, backfeeding on me, okay. The BMP plan certainly went ASBILTS are done and things like that, certainly. The modification, I, I missed it, and now I, I finally saw it today, it's, there's like a line missing on the plan, it, it's there in the, in the computer screen, but what it is, in this, in that area right there, it's like the sidewalk ends, and it's just nothing, but in the drawing, it must be on a no-plot layer, because it, like I said, when we were making the revisions, because Deb had brought it up the first time, I'm like, well, there it is, but, but there it isn't. So this, that's not really a proposed change, it's gonna look the same as what the original approval was, and certainly we can make that minor revision on the plan, it's, it's gotta be changing a layer and reprinting the plan, I, I don't get it. And as far as the, looking at the contour, I agree, we'll have to take a look at that, I think that's just a minor thing, certainly when they're out there grading it, but we'll, we'll look and wrap that up before that. That's basically the modification request, and the back and forth. As far as ongoing work, it has been broken up in phases technically, but it's still, it's, it's an ongoing comprehensive permit for the whole site, there's, you know, maintenance that needs to happen continuously, as far as the invasive species and monitoring, landscaping, all of that, the, the Riverwalk and, and various things, so it's still, it's, it's one big project, but it, certainly to, to build it, it made sense to kind of break it up, but we, we acknowledge there is some ongoing and continuous things that have to happen throughout the site.
And when you mentioned that this SWIP will be updated by a later contractor, how, what's the timeframe or steps with that?
Well, assuming the modification gets granted, I think they're looking to act pretty quickly, it's just the contractor that we had before, kind of, they're looking to change directions from them.
Okay, so, your thought?
We need that information to update the SWIP, because, you know, they'll tell us their means and methods, they'll tell us their key personnel and their schedule and things like that, versus the initial group of work was done with the previous people.
And the director mentioned a punch list of items, is there, is that something that can be provided?
I, I mean, we can, it's like I said, though, it's a, it's an ongoing project, it's, it's one continuous, I think he's looking for a few minor things, like, oh, I know there's a berm that hasn't been constructed yet, but it's part of the ongoing, we have to install plantings, we have to remove invasive species for the next three, it's all the things that are in the conditions, so, you know, constructing the Riverwalk, that type of stuff. By and large, I think the, the work in place is generally how it's supposed to be, but some of the minor things that need to be done is, is part of housekeeping and ongoing type conditions.
And do the changes require any modifications to the order of conditions? Is there any conservation commission oversight at this point?
We've been to conservation, and we got the modification from them, there, there was no real change. Like you said, there, all of the stuff along the Riverwalk, none of that changed, was so, as far as the plantings, the mitigation plantings, that's all still proposed, that's, that has to be done. Certainly, they had concern about stormwater, and we worked through peer reviews, and we worked, it was, it's surprising how hard it is to design something that's changed to look exactly like something that you already did, but we, we got it as close as we could, so each outfall that we had designed previously had the same flow that was already approved to, to go to it, so there, there was no real change for that, so conservation's process went fairly easily.
Okay, and when was the, when was the amended order issued, was that?
I don't know that there was an amended order, I think it was a minor, they deemed it a modification.
Good evening, George Clements, I'm a project consultant for the, for the developer. So, so what we did is, prior to coming to this board, we, we asked to attend a conservation meeting, very informally, just to present these plans, get their opinion, they were the, of the opinion that there was no substantial change based on the drawings and, and the drainage calculations as well, so we did attend the conservation, I think it was on November tenth, if I'm correct, yeah, November tenth, they felt there was no need to file for a new application or amend the existing order of conditions.
All right. See, any other members have questions right now? Member McCauley?
Thank you. My first question is, why did you decide to change the size of the building and the scope of this project?
Yeah, so, so, you know, we, we had the project marketed to the, you know, out on the market for some time, we had a lot of interest from some of the higher, you know, some of the users that may not have been acceptable to the town of Braintree, it, it's a single-use tenant, lot more truck, lot more truck, truck traffic, and we just, we, we felt that the users that we were seeing, it would be a tough sell to this board, and we, you know, we felt that it would be congesting the neighborhood. So, after, after evaluating numerous proposals for the single large building, we thought that we could serve it, sort of, serve the community and ourselves better by breaking it up into smaller, smaller uses, kind of fits better, we've, you know, if you look at the site, and I don't know if any of you've had a chance to, to, toward the, toward the site at this point, we've really created somewhat of a theme where, where it's contractor supplies, we have TLCs, you know, we sold a portion of our property to them, we also just brought in a grain of fabrication company, so, so we're, we're looking to kind of find like uses rather than major shipping and receiving type facilities, because I, I just think that would be terribly disruptive for the neighborhood and, and so did the, the developer.
That, that sounds very positive, I'm sure the neighborhood's happy.
Yeah.
I'm sure the, the people that are gonna be moving into the senior housing a little ahead are also gonna be very happy, no, I think, I think that makes sense. So, my follow-up question then is, what's gonna hap, if I'm looking at this correctly, you're cutting it down by thirty-seven thousand square feet or thereabouts, or, correct me if I'm wrong, what happens to that space, has that become open space, landscaped, you're gonna, you're gonna, you know?
So what it allowed us to do is, is we stayed, you know, we, we gained a little bit of green space, but what we were, what we were able to do is get better shipping and receiving for the single-use building, so, so we have better rotation within the site. We also increased our parking, you know, I think we've increased by quite, quite a substantial number of parking spaces, and a lot of that is, is by the reduction, not only the reduction of the building, it's also the size of the spaces, we accounted for van and some, some tractor spaces, just in case, but we were able to kind of reconfigure it to be more suitable for the contractor base, for instance, generally what you see for truck traffic or vehicle traffic is more vans, box, smaller box trucks, so, so I think that's a, a pretty good benefit as well, and then, I know that...
So, so no additional green space then?
There is, there is additional green space, you know, not a tremendous amount, just being candid about it, we thought that the parking would be a, a more of a benefit, but again, the green space, I think the enhancement really is along this riverfront, and to Peter's really, and, you know, having the parking, because as part of the mitigation package for, to provide public access to the, to the river, there were only three or four spaces, so now we have much more parking that, you know, is gonna free, free up some, some better, better accessibility, and, you know, although it's not green space per se within the actual business park, you do have a considerable amount of green space along that riverfront, especially with the restoration project that's ongoing.
Yeah, there's, there's also, we eliminated parking down there, if you remember, or you probably don't remember, it was a long time ago, but there was like, a drive aisle down the middle with parking on either side, so we converted that area to a, a larger landscape area with the idea, it's, it's closer to that wetland area and closer to the drainage base, and that's there. So, that's one of the, it's, I mean, we're not looking for a parade to be thrown with how much landscape, but we, we increased it.
Yeah, well, it'll be interesting to see the end product, you know, in terms of the landscaping and everything else. You know, we, we all know that this is a very challenging site, Ms. Keller mentioned potential hazardous waste, which was surprising to us when we first started looking at this, soil, you know, river, et cetera, go down the list. So my question is, have you encountered anything different than what was originally conceived, which might alter drainage or anything else?
Surpris, you know, fortunately, during the permitting process, extensive amount of testing on the site, so, so it was very accurate, you know, nothing that was surprising, there's always small deviations, but generally speaking, it was pretty consistent, given the number of borings and samplings, but just to kind of give you some sense of what's been accomplished, we've, we actually received or just filed the first of a series of AULs, AUL Administrative Use Limitations, so, you know, we, we have an open order with DEP, so we started partially closing that order, and we've already filed that first series of AULs Administrative Use Limitations. We also recently submitted, and been working with FEMA, so we've just submitted our, our new flood certificates, which they've accepted, so that'll be changed very soon. And again, to Peter's point, there, you know, I, I, I view it the same way as Sean, it's, it's one large project, certainly gonna sheer, so, you know, we want to be open and transparent as to what is remaining on the site, and a large portion of it, the, you know, I'd say it's ninety-five percent on, and I, I hate to call it phasing, but on that first section, everything's pretty well tight, along the riverbank, that's an ongoing multi-year project, which will require monitoring, that's, that's all under the conservation purview, but we're gonna work closely with Peter and, and make sure that he has the information needed.
If you want to say, I was, we did a great site visit, the bank is stabilized, there's grass growing, which is awesome, trees were being planted, right? I'm not worried about, from my purview or from the town's purview, I'm not worried about, obviously, you know, erosion or the bank failing or anything of that nature, I just kind of want to know, okay, we're gonna move forward with Phase Two, this is what we have remaining in Phase One, you know, is it, is it the, the, there's a, their berm does have to, have to be installed, I think we know it, right? I don't know whatever landscaping has to be proposed, obviously the, the path has to be installed, yes, those are kind of the things that are happening further down the line, but I was just asking to fundamentally memorialize that within, within a punch list, that then we could refer back to, you know, as this project, when Phase Two nears completion, which I think we all look forward to, because I have done, I have watched the videos that were sent, and this is a huge upgrade to the site, so everyone should be proud of this project, but it's just a matter of memorializing what needs to be done at this point in time as we enter into Phase Two. And I think that was my point of requesting a punch list, just so we know what's left.
Into that, and, and again, I think Peter, he, he jumped right in, you know, it is a complicated site, it's probably even more complicated when you've never been there, so thank you for jumping right in both feet, so that's much appreciated. But the good news is, you know, Deb has been on the site since, since we started construction, so it's great, Deb generates monthly compliance reports, she's been doing that for some time, we'll certainly do the same for Peter, kind of checks and balances as to where we are, what our start dates are, just so everybody can manage their own expectations and, and concerns. We also have an LSP that's active on the site, so definitely a difficult site, and, you know, definitely respect Peter's concerns on that, so good, good communication will get us there.
Yeah, I think that's very important.
Yep.
The one thing I never want to ever see again is when we've had floods in that area, you know, it's like, it's like the Second Sunset Lake over there.
Absolutely.
And you just, you know, it shuts, it shuts the area down. Doesn't happen that often, but it has happened, so, okay, I don't have any more questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Member Kent?
I guess, just a point of order, are we looking for the punch list coming from the applicant, or the punch list in the form of the conditions to, to move forward?
You know what, that's a good point, you know, I, I have not written a decision or a modification letter, I can do that, I was kind of coming to the meeting, taking to kind of find a direction from the board, you know, tonight, if that's a condition, I'm happy with that, you know, whatever the board feels most comfortable with at this point.
Okay.
Did I answer, did I answer the question?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Member Conley? Thank you, my question was also related to the punch list and how that would be put together, so that's been answered.
You know, it's something I would, I would happy to be, take input from the applicant, you know, if that can be put together in short order, I would say, please, let's send that over and we'll have Deb verify it, and then we'll kind of move forward, and then I can kind of, I'll, in the meantime, I'm happy to work on a letter, a modification letter, or a modification decision, you know, I've seen both happen here, looking through previous files, obviously for the modification for this project, when it split the projects into A and B, which I think B is TLC, and obviously A is this project, there was a full decision produced, and then recently, there was another project, the address escapes me, where there was a modification letter produced, and so if the board would want a full decision again, we can do that. And so if the board would want a full decision again, we can do that, or if a modification letter, you know, two-page, you know, letter is appropriate, I'm happy to draft that, you know, in short order and circulate that to the board. So whatever the board feels most comfortable with.
Able to move forward?
I'm happy, obviously, they're trying to get going. I know this has been on everyone's agenda for a while now. I would like to move them forward as soon as possible. And in doing so, I think having a punch list would be great, you know, if they can produce that. I know our next meeting is in July, and we're right now halfway through June. So, we can kind of, kind of give me the okay, and I can write a full decision or a modification letter, and then we can kind of go from there. Or if you guys want to approve it tonight, that's up to you for a point of order.
Thank you.
Still trying to learn the rules of the road, you know, with how this board wants to operate.
Thank you.
Member Kane?
So, at the end of the day, we just have some stuff that needs to get done on site to wrap up phase one. They want to progress into phase two. We're just tracking it with a punch list.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, as long as it gets done. Yeah? Sounds good. Okay.
Nothing additional.
What's that?
Nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I guess, couple things to think about is what, where we go from here as far as a decision, a letter, the conditions that are identified in the peer review, or I should say the questions that are identified in the peer review and getting answers to those. I'm guessing I know the answer to this, but if you want to go ahead and give your preference on it, we can consider that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It just, as far as timing and going forward and everything else, I'm sort of guessing I know that the answer's going to be as soon as possible. But what do you see as things that you can accomplish now? I understand some of this you can't necessarily accomplish now because it requires a new contractor and the SWIP needs to be updated, so.
So, so, you know, timing is, you know, we're sensitive to the timing, obviously. We've, we've been kind of anticipating getting through this process. And, and, and just to kind of clarify, I certainly have with me this evening, just to give you folks a level of comfort, it's not a punch list and maybe, maybe I'm not clear. In my world, punch list is at the end of a project, right? Substantial completion, then you have a punch list. What, what I did send to Peter and, and, you know, maybe it's just, it's my nature, kind of focused on, on terminology, I guess. But, but what I did submit on, uh-
May 29th.
May 29th, after our meeting, is kind of just that, a summary of the work that's ongoing. And really, all that's, that remains on that site is the, is, is basically to comply with the order of conditions. The order of conditions, everything else on the site, his occupancies have been granted, inspections have been done, water and sewer sign-offs, everybody signed off on the work that is in place. So it's not like we have a lot of loose ends. We're, we're to the point where all of the landscaping is installed. So really, if, if we're going to call it a phase one, the only work that remains on, in that phase is relative to the order of condition that's, that's open, which we can enclose, but it's really not a punch list because it takes a three-year monitoring eradication. So, I, I have that letter and I'd be happy to provide all of you with this, with this summary, but I would ask the board to move forward with this modification. It's been since October, we're in, you know, this is high season for us as builders. And, you know, with, if we don't have a decision, we cannot adjust our SWIP because we need to reference that as part of our SWIP. So, that process is a 30-day process. We also have a DEP plan that we need to get modified. So, your actions still require us to take more actions because there are several levels of permits here.
Ms. Keller, the, the few things that you went over, some of them, most of them, well, the first two, the SWIP and the O and M, are both document updates, but the, the other one that you mentioned, putting, adding asphalt to put something back to grade, would that be something that should be happening now, or is that something that should be happening after the rest of the construction is done?
Deb is an engineer. She can answer that. From, from my standpoint, there, there, it should just, it could just stay the same because the, it's kind of mounded on one, on, I would say, the, the easterly side there. I mean, the easterly side, so the water's going to be running west, right? So it's going to be kept onto the pavement. And so obviously, at final pave of the entire site, they're going to have to chip out the, some, chip out some existing asphalt and then kind of blend that phase one and phase two together, right? And, and so I think I would just keep it as is for the sake of the existing phase one and what work is going to have to be done within phase two. Do you concur?
Yeah, I would, from what's out in the field, I think what I was getting at is I wanted to see that interconnection between those two phases, how they were going to do that, say, a note on the plan saying reclaim pavement, proposed pavement elevations will be, so that when the contractor gets to that end point, he knows where he's grading that final roadway grades to. So that, that could be a condition in the modification that they revise and provide that grading, revised grading plan, so that it's on the record as to what the final condition should be.
Yeah, this isn't, where phase one ends, there's a six-inch curb, there should be a six-inch curb reveal, granite curb reveal. Right now, there's no curb reveal because the, because the asphalt's been mounded up, right? And so that, to Deb's point, asphalt needs to be reclaimed and taken away, just stripped out, and then phase one and phase two have to be feathered together with, with the final pave in phase two.
So if I may, I'll kind of give you the reason why that is, and if you're okay with me explaining that. So, so again, the, the site, it's a PCB site, some high levels, low levels, but part of the plan, which was approved by DEP, is stockpiling all of the low-level PCB material to the rear of the site. So if you went by the site, you'd see mounds of soil that's stockpiled. That soil, it's covered, but it does have, it runs the risk of mitigating down the roadway. So what we did is to, once you come past the TLC gate, we purposely brought the asphalt up to the top of the curb line, basically creating a water break, because we protect the river with our erosion control, and the best way to do that from preventing any of that runoff coming down the road is to create that. So the idea is to saw cut the area that, that is, that is higher now, saw cut that, and then as we grade the site, we'll grade that road up to its proper elevation. But for now, it's a temporary barrier to prevent, and it was a suggestion by the LSP, so we thought it was prudent to do it that way. But definitely going to saw cut that and, you know, we, we kind of purposely put it to a point where we can capture that roadway and grade it back up. So we do have to, you know, regrade that, and we've always known that, and it was intentional.
Okay, and that would, that would be further down the line, I assume, when everything's pretty much finished?
Yeah, so, so we, we leave that until we stabilize, spread that soil, know that the LSP is comfortable so that we can saw cut that and start grading out that final roadway. So we're just being a little overly cautious, just to make sure that we don't have, and again, the soil is not hazardous, but it is, you know, it does have low level of PCB, so just thought it was prudent to kind of burn that up a bit.
Right. Okay. And, in your opinion, looking at the site, Ms. Keller, would you be comfortable if we just approved the modification with the condition that they comply with the outstanding items in your peer review letter? Or do you think that there's more that's?
No, I, I would agree that that, that could be a way of, of moving forward and just asking them to provide an additional or updated plan addressing those outstanding comments. Because it's not going to change the layout, the limit of work stays the same, it's just correcting a couple of lines and adding a note to the plan.
And the, the monthly compliance reports that were mentioned or the status reports, what, what sort of information is in there? Does that list what work has been done or what type of things are they, those looking at?
So I have put that on pause since they've sort of slowed down the work, but we'll pick that back up once they start phase two again. But usually I identify the weather, the conditions on the site, what they're working on. A lot of times they call me and I, for first phase, I went out when they were installing the drainage, so I could see the bottom of the hole, focused more on the stormwater, making sure that it was installed per plan. And so I identify what they're working on. If someone's on site when I, when I am there, there's occasionally, no one's there, so I'm just, it's really just us. I describe what's, what I see on the site, take some photos for the record. If I can find out what their next couple of steps are, then I'll, I'll identify that too. In the next couple of weeks, they're going to be doing X, Y, and Z.
Okay. And as far as, I guess, first question is whether, and I don't know if the rest of the board would be okay with it, but if we were to grant the modification with the updated plan that was discussed and satisfying these conditions, would that generally work on your end?
Yeah, no, we definitely, you know, Sean can update the plans, submit those, they need to become the new record plan, so, so we're fine with that. You know, with it, I don't think there's an appeal process during a minor modification, so we're not too concerned with that. But that will give us the ability to go ahead, update our SWIP plans, do some, some pre-work while, while working with Peter, getting Peter and Deb the updated plans, but that'll give us the momentum to just at least start moving forward. We could certainly start doing some grading, but we'd prefer to get our SWIP plan. The SWIP isn't going to change on the ground, but we certainly, we want to bring in a new contractor. We weren't happy with the first contractor, quite frankly, so we're sourcing out a new site contractor. So, we want to get them online, get their qualifications into the plan and move forward.
Okay. And then as far as the, the punch list or sort of how the project progresses with the, when things get rolling, would you be able to do some, sort of a construction schedule? You know, this is what we're finishing with this first phase, this is the rest of the project? Would that be something?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's, that's, that's easy for us. We'll give you a baseline schedule updated as, you know, every 30 days, it's kind of typical to, to what we do, so we'll certainly circulate that and, and, you know, we, like I said, the LSP, we have the daily monitoring, so it's important for us to have that. But yeah, daily, monthly scheduling's not a problem for us.
Okay.
I, I would note that the LSP does submit records. I do receive those, so, as well as the town, so there, there's copies of their inspections. They also have hired VHB for their wetland restoration, correct?
That's correct, yeah. VHB is a wetland scientist who has been overseeing the wetland restoration.
So there, there are added levels of inspections on the site ongoing while, while they're doing construction.
Okay. All right, well, I'd be somewhat fine with that. Do you have any questions or comments?
Just to, I guess, help me understand this. The primary matter that brings us before the board here is that we're changing the footprint from one larger building to two smaller buildings, and some of these other things that we've been talking about would come up anyway, and even if we weren't changing the, the footprint of the buildings?
Absolutely. So, so it's an ongoing site. The site during the winter, we, we knew that, you know, in October, we submitted this modification and, you know, things, things go as they go. So, we've been waiting to prosecute this through this board and, but yeah, it's, it's just an ongoing site. You know, a lot of times on some of these bigger commercials, you'd come in and you'd look for pad sites, and that would be more of a phased project. This was never intended to be phased, so it's just kind of, you know, it's dragged on the modification, so now, but our intent was always to open and close the site in one shot. But, you know, timing didn't work out that way, but it would have always been ongoing. And it will be, the project will be finished and there'll still be ongoing monitoring. So what we, you know, it'll be a multi-year process to close out with conservation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Conley? My questions have been answered. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Nope. Okay. Yep.
So when I asked you what was going to happen with all the additional square foot, I think the original plan, as you mentioned, had a different parking design and requirement. And now, I think you also said that you're going to add a lot more parking for trucks and so on. So that, I guess my comment is, that seems like a big change to me. I understand cutting down the two different buildings, but you know, changing the parking design, the amount of spaces to accommodate, the number of spaces, and also to accommodate larger vehicles, that's, that seems like a big change.
And I can, I can explain why it is that. We, we would have preferred to have extra green space, however, it's your zoning bylaws, right? So, so we were looking for a large warehouse-type building, which has a different parking requirement for that type of use. These type of uses are more of an intense parking requirement. So, we, you know, in a perfect world, we would have chose to go with green space, but we wanted to comply with the local zoning ordinance, so it wasn't a decision not to add green space and add an inordinate amount of parking, we just wanted to comply with the zoning. So that's, that's, that's a trade-off, you, you know. And, and look, I think extra parking's a good thing, certainly in an industrial park, certainly an industrial park that's looking to have public, public access, extra parking is a benefit from our view, certainly not changing any drainage calculations and reducing that heavy truck, truck traffic. And quite frankly, it was Melissa Santucci that asked us to do the truck spaces, which I think is great. I mean, we have the opportunity to do it, why wouldn't we do it? So, to answer your question, we wanted to comply, when we decided to make this modification, we had to evaluate the zoning bylaw, which changed parking requirements from that 139,000 square foot building.
So, what, what we don't see-
Yep.
-is, I, I don't see any, you know, numbers in front of me which say-
Oh, we have them.
I'm sorry?
We have them with us. It, it's in your modification request. Have you reviewed that?
Okay.
Yeah, so, so-
So what I'm interested in, you know, for example, is what we went from to where we're going.
Sure.
And are we above or below or just meeting, you know, the parking requirements for this new design? And then my last question would be, how much additional open space is there going to be?
So, so Mike's going to give me the modification, but I, I know this was submitted back in October. The modification request gave you a new table of parking requirements based on the zoning, so that is also on the plan set that was submitted. There is a surplus of parking, which we thought was probably prudent to do based upon, you know, we only provided three or four parking spaces when this board approved the-
So, Mr. Clements, when you say a surplus of parking-
Yeah.
Are we talking one space? Are we talking-
Surplus based on-
Forty spaces?
Yeah.
I mean, what are we talking about?
I'll let Sean explain. He knows it all.
Initially, we had, I think, 231 spaces. Now we have 179 surface spaces plus nine loading spaces, and there's 30 spaces located in the contractor base. So we have a total of 218 identifiable parking spaces, but we had originally 231. So, so there is less parking. When you factor in snow storage and things like that, we're just above where we're required. I think we were required at 155, and we're at 179. But when you factor in the snow storage, we-
So the requirement is 155, and you went up to 179?
Right, but originally approved was 200-
That's a pretty, that's a pretty substantial-
Well, originally approved was 231.
I, I totally understand, but that was a totally different design.
But it also had that same factor of safety in it, and because we were required to identify places for snow removal, or snow storage, that number isn't really as big as, as a 24 extra space increase.
I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, what, what's, what's a reasonable number of spaces? We have the minimum, we have extras, you described it, you know, again, I, I don't know what, you know, maybe the director or- know what, you know, maybe the director or Ms. Keller has an idea. I, I don't know what the right number is.
Yeah, so, so out of that total that, that Sean just recited, five of those spaces are actually dedicated for the riverwalk, so we could, so we've provided five there. And I guess your question about what's the appropriate amount, every time I've seen, you know, petitioners come through this board on such a large project, you know, one of the concerns is overflow parking in neighborhoods. So anytime we can add more parking to, to kind of help us with, with alleviating that concern, we thought it would be prudent to do. It's, it certainly, it lays out well, and I think, it's the first time I ever heard we have too much parking, just with all due respect.
Well, I don't think it's the first time you've ever heard that, but I guess, you know, the other thought I had is, where is all this, where are the, all these excess vehicles coming from? If you, if you, if you have X number of contractor slots and each contractor has whatever, you know, I'm, again, I'm just struggling to come up with...
Sure.
I don't know what the equation is.
Right.
I don't know what the right way to, I don't know if the director has a thought or Ms. Keller, but...
You know, I, I think as a practical matter, we look at it and say, you know, the, we're having businesses, so, so our baseline is our zoning bylaw. And then as, as, as building owners, property owners, we know that our, that our tenants, buyers, they're going to have corporate, they're going to have corporate meetings, they're going to have things. So, so the zoning bylaw doesn't always account for those types of uses, right? So, so it's like any other company, any other company that functions, they may have, you know, people traveling in, out, in and out, or, or they may have meetings. So having a surplus of parking, i- i- if the board feels that they'd like a reduction in parking, I, I have no problem with that. We'll, we'll put it right to the zoning bylaw and then, in the future, if there are parking concerns, we'll be back here before this board when neighbors complain that people are parking along Arnold Street. That's, that's our concern.
Yeah, I, I don't see, if, if that happens, this, that's going to totally change everything. That's not going to happen.
I've seen it happen.
That, that's, you know, a veiled threat. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do...
Oh, no, no, it's...
There's no parking on Arnold Street.
Well, it's a private road, number one, and they do park on Arnold Street. I don't know if you've ever been down there. There's actually truck parking all down it, and we just want to...
All I'm asking is, I don't know what the reasonable number is. I don't know what the right equation, I don't really know what the right way to look at this is. You know, we all favor adequate parking.
Sure.
We like open spaces, obviously, a lot of open space there. But I'm, I'm just asking, so maybe Ms. Keller had a, had an idea?
You include the garage spaces for, that's 30 garage spaces, so that they would be within the building. And so they, I look at that as a reduction because now that's a surface parking space that you don't need now, that is now in, in counted, but within that building.
No, I, I made that assumption, so...
Yeah, yeah.
If you, if you make that assumption that the users are going to park their vehicles inside, whatever the number is...
But, but that's part of that 179, so you could take one, 30 spaces out of the 179 and now you're down to, if I do my math correct, 149?
Yeah.
Which is very close to the 155 required.
Okay.
That, if, it's a way of thinking about it, if that helps.
That's the most reasonable explanation I've heard so far. So, I, you know, do you have a thought, Director, or...
No, I just think with excessive parking, right? I think that, I just want to make sure the excessive parking does not lead to unlicensed vehicles just being parked in the spots, right? And so I think you kind of, I'm not saying that would happen, but I think maybe there could be, there's something to, a follow-through condition to say, all vehicles shall be parked overnight, that they're licensed and they're insured, you know, that we're not just collecting old vehicles or old kind of commercial vehicles or boats to be sitting out there kind of within the excessive parking spots that we're, that we're talking about. And I think that's just more from a devil's advocate standpoint rather than actual total number of parking spots. But I think the number one thing is to make sure that, that the, the project is built with enough parking, that it's a viable, right? It's viable for the project and, and the users within, and or the tenants within that structure.
Let me just point something out, and Sean just pointed this out to me as well, so, so I, I think it's a very good point. Let's not forget, this is actually a capping site. So we want the asphalt, we don't want green space. You don't want green space growing in low-level PCB contamination. So if you have the asphalt, why not use it for parking? That's, that's, that's kind of, that's a good point that Sean made, and I think that, that makes sense.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't want to have this thing go on and on, I just am raising the point.
Sure.
We've changed the, the design. What's the adequate number of parking? Is there a, you know, reasonable way and common-sensical way to look at it that accommodates, you know, the project, but also, you know, open space? Doesn't, doesn't have to have, you know, weeds in it all the time, but anyway, that's my thought, Madam Shearer, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I remember I was on Conservation Commission when this came through the first time and there being a lot of discussion at that time about the, where the capping and different aspects of the environmental contamination were taking place on the site. Not that I particularly remember the details, but I do remember it being a big part of it at that time. Yeah, I, I guess I don't have any more questions on that considering the site itself here and the, all the different regulatory aspects that play into role with it. And so I guess, unless there's any other questions, I guess I'll just make a proposal on the motion since I think I've confused the issue a bunch also with my comments. And then if anybody has any comments or questions, they can obviously pop in. But my motion would be a motion to grant the requested modification subject to timely compliance with the peer review letter dated May 7th, 2025, that the final grading plan be revised and provided in 30 days?
Sure.
In 30 days? And that the monthly schedules be provided with phasing updates on the construction schedule. All right, so we have a, we have a motion by Member Conley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a great night, thank you.
All right, you too. All right, now I'm just looking for a motion to close tonight's hearing. Motion by Member Kane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.